Good morning. This is public hearing conducted by the Committee on Economic Development, Agriculture, Maritime Transportation, Power and Energy Utilities and Emergency Response is now called to order at 9:02 a.m. Notice of the hearing was disseminated to all local media outlets via electronic mail on February 4th of 2020, with the second notice provided on February 9th of 2020. Notice of the hearing was also made known on the Guam Legislature's website. Today's agenda is on Bill numbers 217-35COR and 218-35COR, both introduced by Senator James C. Moynihan. The first item on the agenda is Bill 217-35COR, introduced by Senator James C. Moynihan. It's an Act 2, adds Section 58104R to Chapter 58, Title 12, Guam Code Annotated, relative to creating a qualifying certificate for the enticement and potential establishment of a commercial drone industry on Guam. I'd like to recognize my colleagues who have joined us today, Senator Will Castro, Senator Telo Taidegui, and of course, the primary sponsor of the bill, Senator James C. Moynihan. And I'd like to afford Senator Moynihan the opportunity for an opening statement on his measure.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the agendas today, and thank you to my colleagues for attending, and specifically, thank you for the audience, and looking forward to your comments on how we can improve this bill and what you have to provide to help us. Now, my opening statements are very similar to each of the bills, where we'll be hearing 217 and 218. But to start with, 217 is an Act to add subsection 58104R to Chapter 58, Title 12, Guam Code Annotated. It's relative to creating a qualifying certificate for the enticement and potential establishment of commercial drone industry on Guam. Now, Bill 218, because they're kind of similar, I would like to make some general statements on both measures, and I'll do the same again for 218 as well to not confuse when testimony comes up. But the bottom line is, then, the genesis of introducing these pieces of legislation is to spur economic activity by attracting new industries and creating jobs on the island. Now, we've entertained the possibility of GITA, thank you for being here as well, may be able to adopt new industries in the matrix of qualifying candidates for the QC's. So, we may not actually need this legislation, but we're awaiting actual final response to inquire into an inquiry we previously have made. But nonetheless, even if the board can adopt new industries, one of our goal is that if we're able to cement the language in creating these new industries outlined in specifically this bill, 217, that can be added to the Guam Code Annotated, as many other industries currently are included, that it alone will allow Guam to market to investors. And investors do look at the language outlined in Chapter 58 of the respective title. So, now investors who are in the processing trade, which will be in the 218 bill, or the drone industry, specifically what the bill we're talking about today, for example, would be able to see these options that are available with GITA, and hopefully, that prompts them to seriously consider the investment. So upon introduction of these measures, our office sent out copies of bills to various entities on island, and as expected, there were some positive responses, and there's potential of what they may bring. So it's our belief that the greatest marketing entities on island are the business community, who either may be interested in investing in it themselves, or parties that might want to do such industries too. So, for these specific industries, one of our goals coming into this term was to create jobs, and we figured that it's critical to look at Guam and how it can attract industries. Because of our geographic location, and we had this active buildup going on on their island, and there's currency advantages too, if you consider Asia market, and after numerous discussions, that's how the creation of this bill, 217, and the next bill to discuss, 218, were generated. So, the purpose of this public hearing is to ask ourselves, can these measures be improved? Well, absolutely, they can. Are there under industries missing that can be included? They certainly can, and most definitely. But however, if our island can create insensitive incentives to attract a large facility centers, for example, in our next bill, which can create, all these bills will create jobs, spur the economic activity, and increase our tax base. And we're just taking the proper steps to do so. So, I'm looking forward to the presentations and your help in moving these bills forward. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Senator Moynihan. And at this time, I'd like to also recognize Senator Kelly Marsh Titino, thank you for joining us this morning, and invite up anyone who would like to testify on Bill 217-35. And this, of course, is the bill that would create a qualifying certificate for the potential establishment of a commercial drone industry on Guam. All right. Good morning, Mr. Hernandez. Please begin by introducing yourself before you begin your testimony. Thank you.
Sure. Hafedeh, good morning. Chairperson is Senator Clinton Rigel, and members of the Committee on Economic Development, Agriculture, Maritime Transportation, Power and Energy Utilities and Emergency Response. My name is Artemio Ricky Hernandez. I'm the Deputy Administrator for the Guam Economic Development Authority, and I thank you for the opportunity to provide testimony on Bill Number 217-35, an act relative to creating a qualifying certificate for the enticement and potential establishment of a commercial drone industry on Guam. Bill 217 seeks to add the "commercial drone industry" under a new section 58104R to the list of eligible industries for the qualifying certificate program administered by the Guam Economic Development Authority, and includes specific requirements to the commercial drone industry to be eligible to apply for a QC, such as conforming with all local and federal laws and regulations associated with the use of commercial drones, and incorporates a broad definition of the commercial drone industry to encompass the research, development, training, education, manufacturing, wholesale, retail, or the utilization of commercial drones conducted on Guam, as well as nationally and internationally. The GITA is in favor of fiscal policy that aims to create economic activity of value to Guam, which is one of the requirements necessary for the approval of a QC application. Although the GITA believes that nothing in the current QC statute precludes any interested company in applying for a QC, for most of the commercial drone industry activities identified in Bill 217, in either of the services or manufacturing categories, under section 58104, Chapter 58, Title 12 of the Guam Code Annotated, the GITA understands that there may be economic benefits associated with the growth of this industry on Guam, and is supportive of the intent of the bill. The GITA suggests the committee's consideration of ensuring the following items are addressed in Bill 217. Bill 217 lists research, development, training, education, manufacturing, wholesale, retail, or utilization of commercial drones as activities encompassed under the definition of commercial drone industry. This broad definition included, under the word "utilization," could possibly include businesses and activities that use a commercial drones as part of their services, such as surveillance and inspection, wedding photography or videography, land surveying, utilities, inspection, pest control, et cetera. The GITA recommends that the utilization of commercial drones as an eligible activity be reconsidered to provide more clarity as to eligibility. Number two, proposed section 58104R2 states that such commercial drone industry activities also include activities conducted not only on Guam, but internationally, nationally or internationally. The GITA believes that the activities of the commercial drone industry businesses outside of Guam should not be included as an eligible activity for the purposes of the QC program, and may present further issues for compliance. The GITA is excited that at the prospect of new industries on Guam, and with the committee's consideration of the aforementioned items, is available for continuing dialogue toward the goal of diversifying Guam's economy, introducing new investments to our island. Once again, thank you for the opportunity to provide testimony on Bill 217. Should you have any questions? I'm available.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez. Any questions for my colleagues, for Mr. Hernandez? Senator Taidegui?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good morning. Good morning, Ricky. It's always a pleasure to see you, knowing that our government is working hard to bring and grow our economy, and you being here with this bill, and I appreciate your testimony. In fact, could I get a copy? Could I have one of the staff take your copy and make a copy for us, please?
Sure. Provided at the front.
Yeah. So, I might have to come back, Mr. Chair, just for another one on some of the things that you mentioned. And one of the things is, earlier, can you explain, first, because it's two bills that talks about QC's, can you explain what are some of the requirements in order to have a QC on Guam, as far as, like, you know, employing certain people, how much investment to make? Can you just give just a few standard, like, the top three important things in order to establish a QC on Guam?
Yeah, sure. The requirements that GITA looks at, especially as it states in the law, is that, number one, it creates some jobs, creates employment. There are other four or five other requirements, such as, it has to create jobs, and then also...
How many? How many jobs?
The law doesn't state how many jobs it needs to create. It just says the creation of employment.
So, it could be one, two, 10, as long as there's one, it creates one job for somebody out there?
Yeah, the law's not specific on the number.
So, it could be one, right?
Yeah. But it has to do that first, and then it has to do one of the following. I think it has to generate an economic, or create an economic activity of value. It has to maybe lower or create affordable homes. It has to...
I'm sorry, what was that last one?
Create affordable homes. I think I have these specific ones here. It also has to, and these are or, right? So, the law is very specific, as it says that it has to create employment, and then plus, it has to do one of four or five other things, and those things are replace imports, reduce consumer prices, create affordable housing, create economic activity of value to the territory, or establish Guam as a financial insurance center. So, that's what the law specifically states as some requirements for QC applicants to, as they apply, they have to kind of ensure they achieve those.
Those are particular ones. Those are one of the top things. So, do you think this industry here, right, has qualifications? It meets the qualifications in order to receive a tax credit?
I guess, to answer the question of industry...
Or QC, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it would, I wouldn't say necessarily one way or the other. It would just be on an application basis. So, once we see an application come in, then we can determine if they meet those objectives. It would be premature to determine if an industry, like, the entire industry would qualify. It would be, they would go through the process like any other company as they apply.
And that's through the board at GITA, who determines that?
Yeah, the GITA board ultimately determines a recommendation that is then sent to the governor eventually, after it goes through a certain approval process, and she has, you know, 60 days to determine what she wants to do with that, or execute it or not.
Has there anybody, any company that has a drone company that is interested in the QC come forth to GITA right now and submitted their application for QC?
No, we're, well, I'm not aware of any, of any specific company.
Okay. Thank you so much. Thank you, Ricky. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Taidegui. Any other senators have any questions? Senator Castro? Okay, at this time, I'd like to call up Mr. Art Dolly, who's signed up to testify as a part of Aviation Concepts. Good morning, Mr. Dolly. Please turn on your microphone and introduce yourself and the company you represent for the record before you begin your testimony. Thank you.
Good morning, Senator. My name is Art Dolly. I'm the president of Aviation Concepts. We're an aviation services provider based up on Guam International Airport, and I've been a longtime resident since 2003 up there, and basically, business aviation support and support of DOD contractors, aviation contractors. Thanks for the opportunity to submit comments of support for the proposed legislation on Bill 217 relative to creating the QC's that would attract commercial drone entities to Guam. I'm going to speak a little bit off the cuff here. I've got prepared notes, but as I listen to the testimonies and get a little bit more feedback about the programs, or the QC program in GITA, I'm not sure how aware the board is, or GITA is, of the commercial market out there on a global level. I'm very familiar. I've been involved in it for the last six, seven years. It's one of the reasons that I'm a partner in Aviation Concepts. I've been working out of Singapore, but I chose to move here because of what I viewed as a huge opportunity for Guam, particularly in the unmanned industry. Fair to say also, I want to address some other components that I believe should, might be added to the bill, but I'll leave that for a little bit later here. Guam is very unique in the unmanned world. When you hear me use the word drone, I'll often use the word unmanned, meaning unmanned or autonomous vehicles. Its location to some of the biggest markets, particularly Asian markets, for U.S. providers and contractors is huge. I've been working in Singapore for the last three years. I've worked over in the Middle East. I've worked in South America on, in projects that were related to this, and basically, representing Fortune 100-type companies in the U.S. that are evolving into these markets. They're all involved in it now. You should also be aware that Guam, there are seven U.S. test sites for commercial drone providers for R&amp;D activities, and those, as they, you know, they develop the new technologies. Guam is very, very unique in the fact that it sits on a huge expanse of uncontrolled airspace that would, for potential investors, be very, very attractive. It's uncontrolled airspace that can be applied for with the Federal Aviation Administration for these type of activities. This type of airspaces are very, very difficult to find anywhere else in the world, and particularly in North America. So I can tell you, because I go to many, many trade shows, I'm involved in industry activities, I'm on certain boards, that Guam is on the radar of almost everybody. Of course, without incentive like QC and other economic incentives, it's a long way to come. It's a long way to move companies. But I can tell you that they're all, I've made people aware through some of my relationships, but they're also aware that because of its location for R&amp;D activities, it's significant. One of the big concerns is, is what type of talent pools exist, what type of training programs exist on the educational side, bringing up young people in the unmanned world, what type of economic incentives can we get there? Are there free trade zones? Are there qualifying certificates, those type of programs? So, in any case, I just, it's a little bit off my notes here, but I wanted to make you aware that Guam is a very, very significant target on a lot of these companies' radars. Although emphasized in the introduction portion of the bill, 217, I would add that additional language exists that references specifics in the aviation and aerospace industry, in particular, training of a local talent pool. Our hope is that the language can be expanded to specifically include aviation training classes, and I'm talking about for fixed-wing business aircraft airline-type activities. Drone, let's see, training classes for both drone and fixed-wing aircraft, drone testing facilities, full motion simulator training, both for business aircraft and airlines. I can tell you, that is also on the radar of some companies that are very, very well-known on a global level. Aviation maintenance technicians, and many other aviation-type of support-type careers. We're actually in partnership with Guam Community College in developing an aviation curriculum right now. We're in the finalizing formal agreement with GCC for aircraft or airline dispatch career curriculum, also a drone design, test, and build capabilities, and among other things, other support-type classes. So, our ability to train the next generation of aviation aerospace professionals will be contingent upon attracting these companies. These companies will not come unless these type of training programs are here and a local talent pool can be developed. Not only will it be attractive to them, but it'll, our, the hope is, is that career paths will be defined, built, and that Guam starts to develop its own pool of talent that can be resourced to both the fixed-wing airline and drone communities. So, and we have great, great confidence in that. We've been well-involved in activities upfront. Why is the issuance of a QC important? I think without incentive in the form of a QC, it's just not going to happen. It's a long way to move people. Families have to move here. In many cases, they have young kids, uprooting. Those type of things are, it's a long way. It's a small island. There aren't typically a lot of the resources that some of the people that live in larger communities, or urban and rural communities that are used to. When they get here, they're going to realize it's quite the paradise, and they're also going to realize that it's quite the resource for these type of businesses, and they're also going to realize that the future opportunity is absolutely huge. So, I'm one of the biggest flag bearers for that when I'm able to travel to these trade The issuance of a QC attracts aviation and aerospace companies to Guam, which in turn are going to provide, our hope is, additional resources in the form of critical air transport services. I'm not sure how much longer your families are going to be accepting of paying $2,000 economy tickets back to the mainland or Hawaii. I'm going to guess that without attracting more competition and additional resources here, we all could be paying $3,000 in a few years for those type of tickets. You've got one provider out here, they've got the market, and they know it. So, building these type of programs will provide the talent pools and the career paths for companies that realize there are additional resources to support them. Hope is additional competitors will come to Guam when additional companies sign up to do their business here. Emerging technologies such as drones and unmanned and autonomous aircraft, when I talk about autonomous aircraft, we're talking unmanned taxis, which you're starting to see being flown in certain areas of the world. I can think of Dubai, Singapore, a couple areas, but they call them urban air mobility vehicles. It's not in the too-distant future that that is going to be, perhaps not in Guam too soon, but in many of our city areas. Many of your largest companies like Uber, the large original equipment manufacturers and the airlines are already building them, they're already operating them, and they're being, they're training pools of talent in the local areas, and there are young kids coming up to college programs. So, our hope is that by issuing QC, or the ability QC, that we can interest those companies in getting here, and it's all contingent upon training local, local young adults and kids coming through UOG, GCC, some of these areas, and we have that ability. Again, Guam is strategically, you have no idea how strategically attractive it is, and primarily, particularly for the companies involved in urban air mobility and some of the more complex type of drone operations. I'm not really talking about real estate, you know, taking pictures, local pictures of real estate and all that. I'm talking about very, very complex type operations, what we call beyond visual line of sight type operations. They require protected airspaces that in some cases are maybe hundreds of miles, square miles in size. The only place, and particularly over an oceanic environment, the only testing sites in the United States that exist for that are off the coast of Texas and California, and they are completely closed. Have about three-year waiting times to get into. Right now, Guam could be open, and it could easily attract some of these companies that don't have that time to wait. That is done through the FAA. The oversight of this area out here comes through the Honolulu Flight Services District Office, and we work very, very closely with them. I'm very, very familiar with that process. My suggestion is, is particularly as, you know, you consider issuing QC and trying to attract some of these companies, that we bring GITA into the conversation so they actually understand the type of opportunity here, and some of the unique characteristics that Guam has that would play into this. Let's see. I think also, by attracting these type of companies, also Guam has a real opportunity here to promote the island and the talent pool that it develops, the students develops, as some of the top tech kids in the world. I mean, this is where it's happening. You talk about urban air mobility, you talk about air taxis, autonomous vehicles, this is where it can happen. And so, if it's all concentrated here, this will be a beacon of technology. You have the resources. GTA and DOCOMO are bringing in, and we've got fiber optic laid all over the island. We've got 5G coming in, which is going to be critical for a lot of these things, and so Guam theoretically can be the biggest, or the smallest, biggest tech center possibly on a global level there is, if these type of companies get here. I could go on and on and tell you, get into more specifics and detail about some of the programs. It's probably not important at this point. I think what is important is to know that the organizations that have those type of operations, capabilities, and technologies coming up are very, very aware of Guam. The first comment I hear a lot is, it's a long way to come. What's the support out there like? What's the talent pool like? And is there any type of economic incentive to get out there that would help us? You have to remember that the unmanned world is still much, much the Wild, Wild West. A lot of well-resourced companies are going in and out of business. It's, it's an industry that will ultimately flourish, but a lot of people will feel the pain, and I don't think, there's a lot of these companies that are, might be on the edge of deciding whether to relocate to an area like Guam when investment comes in. I think investors are going to take a look at that. My hope, and leaving here today also, is one of the recommendations I'd like to make, I'm not quite sure how it's done, I submit it to the board, is that we also expand the language and scope of Bill 217 to include aviation service providers that specialize, particularly in the following areas: aviation training for drones and fixed-wing aircraft, FAA-certified type courses. They are here, the ability is here. I don't know if you're aware, or anyone's aware here, there is actually one of the very, very few FAA-written and practical testing facilities in the United States is located right over in HC5 on the south side of the airport. So, we have the ability to test and certify local kids. The idea is to put them through these type of courses, this goes for adults too, older folks like me. We have the ability to provide those certified courses on island, do testing and certification right here. They have the ability to walk away from these courses with accreditations that will be recognized on a global level. None of it can really happen unless we get the business out here. So, I guess those are my parting words. I'm hoping, again, that the language in 217 can be expanded to include aviation training, both for, also for scheduled and non-scheduled charter providers, scheduled airlines, regional airlines. You're aware Cape Air left a while ago. They're actually one of our, we provided support for them for some time, but regional carriers have interest in coming out here. Full motion simulation for both the airlines and business aircraft are also in the mix, and the training of maintenance and avionics technician providers. Huge career opportunities for these kids. If we get the business out here, we're going to be able to, we'll develop the programs that will attract those businesses, and I think the QC will be probably the incentive that's needed to get discussion going and get these people recruited out here. That's really all I have to say. I hope I didn't get too far off the point, but that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Dolly. Just a quick question. When you talk about all these companies, these large companies involved in drone technology and aviation that are really starting to eye Guam, what exactly is it they're interested in? It sounds to me that you're talking about testing of their technology in this region. Is that what they're primarily interested in?
There's two things that they're interested in. Because Guam sits in, under U.S. jurisdiction, i.e. federal aviation jurisdiction, the FAA now is requiring, this just started occurring with package delivery services, they are now requiring certification under what they call federal... now requiring certification under what they call Federal Aviation Regulation Part 135 as an air carrier. So, up until the middle of last year, people were able to operate under variances from the FAA without any type of certification. The problem was is that getting regulation, they define drones now as aircraft, so aircraft flying in the national airspace system need to be regulated. Now, people do not, particularly in the drone industry, have not typically worked in a regulated environment. So, the advantage here is that because we're in FAA jurisdiction, we have the resources here, we have the expertise to help people gather that type of certification. They can do it in the US. I can tell you that the FAA is completely understaffed. They lack subject matter expertise in many offices. Guam happens to have some of the top unmanned people in its staff through the Honolulu and Fargo, North Dakota district offices. The other issue is that, is for R&amp;D activities. They need oceanic airspace in protected airspace, federal aviation protected airspace that is regulated under what they call a certificate of authorization. It's somewhat of a complex procedure, we're very, very familiar with it, we've done several of them, and the idea is to attract those type of companies.
Thank you, Mr. Dali. Senator Castro?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, I want to thank the prime author for the measure. I think it's an excellent way to stimulate the economy. Mr. Chair, I have a, maybe a two-pronged approach. One, one address to GITA and then maybe to yourself, Mr. Dali, and follow up to some of the statements you made. So, the QC program I see as a tremendous benefit. Any kind of tax incentive to stimulate the economy, bring in new industry, for me personally as one lawmaker of 15, see as a massive incentive. Correct me if I'm wrong, I just, three off the top of my head are apparent, right? We have the insurance industry, beneficiaries of that industry for the QC program. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
Great. And then also we see, of course, tourism, some tourism establishments also benefiting from the qualifying certificate.
Yes.
And then, of course, GRMC is also a beneficiary of a qualifying certificate?
Yes.
Great. And I think in all instances then, Ricky, we see that each of these industries, almost fully matured industries, at least for tourism and insurance, have not only created employment, they started, they created employment, they sustained employment, and then we could see the economic benefit to the territory. So, those would be three good examples in my opinion of how this industry that benefits to some extent from a tax incentive, if you will, has been able to give back significantly to the economy. The reason why I bring this up to GITA is because I think while finite in its scope, naming a specific industry may be small in comparison to maybe two of the giants that I mentioned, I think it's, it still meets your threshold in terms of creating employment and creating economic activity and value. There's one way, I guess, it depends who you speak to, right? In terms of replacing imports. Not only do I look at it from a materials perspective, but in terms of replacing imported labor. I think Mr. Dali was right when he mentioned more than once that this has the potential to create internal capacity or on-island capacity for the industry, whether you're assembling or you're going to operate these drones or unmanned aerial vehicles or fixed wing vehicles, right? And so, I still have to come up to speed with this industry, but I think, I think these are all incentives. I do see a direct tie-in to Guam and the economy, not just commercially but educationally. Mr. Dali, I have a couple of follow-up questions. You mentioned training at least four times, GCC twice, and UOG at least once. And could you recap, restate for the record for me what was happening with GCC in terms of a certificate program?
Yeah, and currently, right now, we're working with Mary Okata at GCC on developing an aviation curriculum for GCC. It's starting out right now with three separate courses, which we've already, we've been meeting over the past year. It's in the, like I said, we're in the process of formalizing our final agreement, and our hope is to have these programs in place by next fall. These are, one, airline dispatch certificate, and these are FAA authorized courses, which when complete, not only will they have, get college credits for them in the aviation program, they will also walk away with FAA license. That will be a license for life, that will be a license for them to work everywhere from on a global level, United Airlines and an operational control center, those type of things. These are career paths. The other two courses that we have right now, we're starting off tiptoeing as we get the rest of our programs in place. And again, it's kind of contingent upon the type of resources we can attract out here. But the other two courses are a design, build, and fly course for drones. The intent is to provide a turnkey type program for college students that takes them through the design and dependent upon the type of interests or activities that excite them, whether it be from search and rescue, disaster relief type things, geo-mapping, it just goes all over the place. They're able to reveal customized platforms that get them into the business. This course also is designed for, when complete, to leave them with a remote pilot, FAA remote pilot license and the ability to conduct commercial activities. This is the idea to build careers. The other course that we have is a very, very general drone course about basically the basics of drone construction, a little bit less, but it's designed for the local, for GCC as the beginnings of a much more comprehensive aviation training program. We, our hope is, and right now we'll be adding much to the activities that I referenced before, aviation maintenance technicians, avionics, electronics.
Thank you. Since you mentioned United, I had a conversation with a Ms. Laurie about a woman in aviation program.
Very familiar.
Okay, good. I just learned about it the last three days. And so, I would encourage my colleagues maybe to think about that. She's seeding a very similar program, but at the high school level for women who express interest either in the operations side or other parts of the aviation industry.
Well, I'm very familiar with women in aviation and a lot of, familiar with the leadership there too. And there've been a lot of discussions over the past couple of years with them.
Thank you. You know, you also mentioned at the closing part of your statements about the evolution of this industry towards becoming a regulated industry where there are certain compliance requirements, whether it's for federal law or local regulations, and I appreciate that. I also want to state for the record, especially for GITA, that I do see tremendous uptick in terms of R&amp;D opportunities for testing of materials. You spoke at great length, and I'm going to have to go back and listen to this again because I don't understand the particulars, but it's obvious to me in terms of research and development in these types of environments, marine and terrestrial. With that said, Mr. Chairman, I went on the record more than at least half a dozen times in the last two terms, that I really would like to see the evolution of our relationship with the Department of Defense to be along the, more along the lines of high-tech development. And I did posit at one time, a training facility that would create a center of excellence for one or more branches of our defense department, specifically in the area of drone technology, whether from an operator standpoint or a technician standpoint, et cetera. So, I applaud again the prime author of this piece and you, Mr. Dali, for coming forward to share some of that insight, coming at it from the private sector as an expert. I think it brings tremendous credibility to what it is myself and other colleagues are trying to do. Less about bombardment and armament and arms training, and more about the high-tech opportunities that this part of the world is very capable of producing. You're correct, I do see the upside, not necessarily for Guam and its limited population in terms of the evolution of the industry and dropping of goods. It's all over the Amazon world, we hear about it. So, I'm not familiar with that at great length, but I do want to capitalize on what you did allude to as well, surveillance. I'm sure that my colleagues here can recall from the Coast Guard trip that we took at Big Navy about three, four weeks ago, and they made it public that they are the beneficiary, they are the beneficiary of a drone in partnership, whether it's with the Navy or a research firm or a private sector firm. Are you familiar with the Coast Guard and/or Navy's recent acquisition of a long-distance drone?
Yeah, we actually host, one of the companies is called the Sea Dragon Project. We actually host one of those companies in our facility.
So, I'm familiar with Sea Dragon, and Sea Dragon actually is a hybrid program that has not just UAVs, but also actual aircraft that patrols all of Micronesia. For, for a conscripted price, and again, Mr. Chairman and the prime author, Senator Moilen, this actually has an economic upside because if we can develop the internal capacity as well as the equipment, there's actually a dollar value associated with this. And that is so important, I'm sure Senator Kelly, when she gets her turn at the mic, is going to be able to underscore the need to surveil our territorial waters for illegal fishing, human and/or narcotics trafficking. And I'll close with this. I know that, as a matter of fact, Ricky, if you're in a position to speak about it, please do, that the development of Guam as a center of excellence for the aviation industry in general, I don't think there was ever any talk about UAVs at the time, to the best of my knowledge, happened at one time under the Guterres administration. And so, there was a massive master plan that was put together. Can you speak a little bit to that in terms of, remember when they had the BRAC closures? I'm not sure if you're familiar, but there was a master plan that was made public, and they were supposed to house these facilities, I mean, these types of operations. And the reason why I would like, if you're in a position to speak to that, it stated for the record, is because it speaks again to a vision that was laid on the table 20 years, 30 years ago, but now in its latest iteration with this recent development of drones and UAVs, it might bring us full circle with what we should have been doing a long, long time ago.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not familiar with, if there's any study or plans back then during the BRAC, late 90s, but if I, if I could, I do agree with you that, and I echo your sentiments, that bringing everyone here to the table just to discuss this, this new industry is important. And I just wanted to take the opportunity to just mention that, you know, the QC program is, in general, is welcoming of these types of industries. And depending on the application that we, that submitted, commercial drone industry businesses could already apply under the services category if they provide a vitally needed service or generate economic activity. And then as well as create jobs, and then one of the other five, which is create economic value to Guam or to the territory. So, we welcome any of the businesses that are already interested to come in and work with GITA to apply for a QC. It's not, you're not prevented from doing so. But what I think what the bill does is that it specifies a specific type of activity. And the goal really of, or at least the intent of the testimony provided is that the word that utilization, when we look at it, we look at it from a compliance perspective. And how do we ensure that they're complying with certain requirements? But as the QC program is written, it's pretty broad. We work with the individual companies and work out the requirements that they have in terms of what they, what they are willing to accept, and if they do, based on the QC requirements, then we go, then they go through that process to get it to the board level. So, we're welcoming of all types of industries, if they provide a vitally needed service and generate some economic activity, you know, that's welcoming, we're welcoming, we welcome that. And from, from the workforce development perspective, you know, in terms of providing training programs or services, I think in terms of, you know, using the QC program for those types of services, I believe that there is another program that Guam Law authorizes, which is a Guam Registered Apprenticeship Program. And so, if a business is interested in getting a subsidy in terms of tax credits against their BPT that they might be paying, they can approach Guam Department of Labor, who administers that tax credit program, since we're talking about tax incentives. And part of the training for these registered apprentices is that they were able to pay for 50% of their, or not pay for, but receive tax credits for 50% of the, not only salaries of these apprenticeships or these apprentices, but also the training costs. And these are considered eligible costs. And so, from, you know, in creating and generating a new industry, getting the investment into Guam from off-island or on-island, and then also generating or growing the workforce, there are programs set in law already, such as the QC program in this case, and then the Guam Registered Apprenticeship Program. And, you know, with that program, you approach Guam Department of Labor, you get registered as a sponsor organization, you create, if they don't have the types of apprenticeship programs already created, they work with companies to create those programs. And, you know, they have a pretty robust system over there at Department of Labor. So, in terms of, I bring these two up because, you know, these programs exist currently, and I think that identifying them in a, in policy and in creating a fiscal policy to identify these drone, these types of industries, whether it's this or other types that might be contemplated, I think is something that's important. And I think what Bill 217 does, and as we stated in testimonies, that it actually specifies and creates even more specific requirements, whereas in the current QC law, if a commercial drone industry business came in and applied under the services, you know, there wouldn't be all the requirements that are in Bill 217. But so, you know, we welcome any additional requirements that we would have to follow in the law as guidance. But, you know, everyone's more than welcome to come in and speak with us. So, appreciate that.
Just a quick comment. I think you would have applications for drone companies if there was some guidance in the QC program for aviation and aerospace. It doesn't exist, and so I think there's a hesitancy because of the time and cost involved in putting that together. Just a quick comment. Put it in the QC guidance, and I guarantee you're going to see some applications. I know for a fact you will.
Thank you, Mr. Dali. Mr. Castro?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do want to restate for the record my support of Senator Moilen's Bill 217, along with the suggested amendments, which would utilize a tax incentive to see, to seed and mature a new industry in Guam with the prospect of creating additional jobs, perhaps even an upside to manufacturing, education, research, and development. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Castro. Senator Kelly Marsh-Titton?
Sajid Smasi, Mr. Chair. So, first I also want to state that, of course, I support the development of any new industry. And it's good to hear what the QC programs are, to be able to have that understanding and see the potential for them being able to qualify. And then for Mr., let me make sure I pronounce it properly, Dali. Your expert testimony has been very helpful in allowing us to understand quite a few issues in themselves. So, we've covered it a little bit, but just for clarification, Mr. Hernandez, you were saying in the testimony from GITA that nothing precludes an interested company from applying for a QC. So, just to be able to understand, if there was a drone company, and I understand some of their hesitancy at the same time, but they would be able to apply for a QC at this time already?
Yes, if they, if they fall under one of the categories or eligible activities, and the assumption here is that they would probably fall under the eligible activity of service, and then they provide or create employment, and then they fall under one of the other requirements, such as creating an economic activity of value to Guam.
Malik. And it was also good to hear how you were saying that there's positive here in the bill, where it creates those additional requirements, provides some guidance that isn't necessarily there. And as Mr. Dali was saying, that things like this are perhaps going to be an additional attractant to those companies. So, having specific reference to it in law, it sounds like may indeed be able to assist. For Mr. Dali, is it, and I believe through your help and Sajid Smasi for helping having the vision and setting up the programs that we are seeing now at UOG and GCC, I'm sure that took quite a bit of work. So, thank you very much from the community for doing that sort of work and having that kind of vision. Because you've probably looked into this quite a bit, you can help us understand some of these issues. Is it an impediment at this point to not yet have a defined protected airspace? I think there are some areas, to my understanding, that have definite boundaries of protection around the airport, around the military bases. But is that something that we need to be working on, is making sure that the entire island and our surrounding Ee's island and our surrounding EEC has an understanding of these protected airspaces and what's available and not?
Yeah, absolutely. The airspaces that I was referring to are basically airspaces that are approved by the Federal Aviation Administration for mostly R&amp;D-type activities. I specifically refer to a huge block of airspace off the east side of the island. Towards the west side and the southern and northern sides, those are protected airspaces for the military and Guam International Airport arrivals and departures. There are boundaries around each one of those areas that are, are protected. You are actually, believe it or not, allowed to operate in them by getting ad hoc type approvals through the FAA. It's actually a fairly easy process to get them reviewed, and in many cases approved, as long as it's not within flight boundaries and those type of things. Those are typically for kind of non-complex type operations, operations that we refer to as in visual line of sight. So the type of activities that I'm talking about are much more complex and require much bigger airspace authorizations. The answer to your question is, is yes. We, we should convene some type of, of a group to understand what type of airspaces can be, you know, can be leveraged, you know, for these type of things. Any organization can come in and apply for a particular certificate of authorization, but it has to have a justifiable means, has to have the resources, it has to have the people in place, the subject matter experts and the operators that know what they're doing. The FAA doesn't obviously award those, those type of approvals without, without deep investigation. But yeah, it's, the real opportunity is off the east side of the island, and I'm talking of blocks of, you know, maybe hundreds of square miles of, of airspaces that can be used for those type of activities.
Another thing that I think would be helpful for us to understand is, we all realize that throughout the archipelago, we're going through a heavy amount of militarization, and we're part of a very large, an extremely large Mariana's Island testing and training area. So with all of that being said, do you see any of that as being an impediment or having some conflict that needs to perhaps be worked out with this type of airspace usage and growth for the industry over time?
No, I think that's going to be a huge advantage to Guam. The majority of your DoD contracts come from civilian operators. In order to, to be in a position to bid a lot of those projects, you have to have the resources in place to do that. There are many, many companies, there are companies now that come over from the mainland right now. That's where all the business is coming from, I think. The idea is to, is to get them to relocate here or to build companies here that, that can do those type of things. I'm guessing, who knows politics these days, but I'm guessing Guam isn't going to become any less busy, particularly on the military front. And I'm guessing that much of the allocations from the government for civilian contracts for DoD-type activity are only going to increase exponentially. And that's, that's going to be, you're going to see a lot of, right now, we host a lot of helicopter activities from two of the biggest providers in the world that are flying missions back and forth between a lot of the, the milit, the Pacific Fleet and, and whatnot, basically in provisioning ships and all that. A lot of those activities are now being replaced by, or will be replaced by unmanned activity. Those will be civilian providers. And there's no reason that those civilian providers shouldn't be based here and shouldn't be manned by, by, by the local, local workforce.
Right. And so just to make sure that I've followed what you were saying, so earlier you had stated that having the protected airspace, like being within an area such as here, perhaps that additional protection is, is favorable to an industry like this. And so just wanting to clarify, like all of Tinian, I believe they're now trying to or working at claiming all of that airspace. And so you're saying that you don't think between civilian companies and the military presence here, you don't think that there will be conflicts of airspace or growing restrictions?
There's going to be a lot of conflicts in airspace. When you talk about conflicts, you know, I can't speak for Tinian, and I'm not sure specifically to what block of airspace you're referring to. We're very familiar with the blocks of airspace that are protected by the military now. There is, those are obviously dedicated blocks. To answer your question, civilian contractors that are working for the DoD will have full access to those if they're pertinent to the, to the jobs that they're bidding on or that they're contracted for. For R&amp;D-type activities and the type of things that we're talking about under the, under the 217, there is an immense amount of airspace separate from these airspaces, the military airspace, is the Guam international arrival and departure routes, those type of things, a huge amount of airspace.
And that's important to hear because with, without your testimony, at least for myself, I don't know how to assess that larger set of airspace. And I know that they do have very restricted airspace for the, the bases. So it's important to hear that there, it looks like that there is enough airspace aside from that.
Just for, if you ever want just general knowledge about those airspaces, it's, if you go onto FAA.gov slash unmanned, there's a host of links there, and they also pertain to the airspaces out here that are, that are closed, open, all those type of things. They're, they're, they're all public resources. Sifting through them is quite a challenge, unless you're in the business. It's overwhelming, but, but the information is out there.
And hence the importance of your expert testimony. So thank you for the sifting that you've done.
I'd be more than happy in, in any type of venue to.
And getting to the training, it was good to hear about the training, the classes that you said that are being set up at UOG and GCC. So that, that answers a lot of.
Not, not UOG, it's actually GCC right now.
Oh, GCC right now. But I, but there's going to be growth at UOG, was my understanding, is that correct? Or there's potential for growth?
But there's potential. Yeah, right now, we're working directly with GCC.
Okay, okay. And is there any other training that can occur outside of GCC? Are there any certification programs that would occur outside of it? Or is it better that it just works within GCC?
That's our primary goal, is, is to drive through GCC. Yeah, we are, we are absolutely working outside of GCC. There's a number of, everything from continuing education to, to private institutions, companies that want to come over and, and train. We're, we're partnered with one of the largest training providers in the United States, so they've got a, a huge clientele there. So in addition to the GCC business, which is a substantial part of what we're going to do, but there, there's a much bigger, bigger potential for training outside of that. And yeah, we do have those pipelines. So we'd be, our hope is to draw a lot of, a lot of, a lot of training students to the island for that also.
And it seems to fit in with some of our models throughout the Mariana's that we serve as testing, or not so much testing, but I mean, training for pilots. And so I can see how that fits in with some of what we're doing already.
Very critical to, to have that added.
Yes. And what numbers are you referring to when you're talking about us needing to have a talent pool? What numbers do you think we should be striving towards in attracting these industries?
It certainly depends on, on the amount of industry that we, we attract here. And it depends on how complex the operations are and what, what type of support they're going to be needing. But, you know, gosh, hundreds, in the hundreds, you know?
No, that's very helpful to, to understand. I was thinking smaller than that, so hundreds sounds very good. And then with GCC and the potential for UOG, what is the length of these programs? Are we talking about a two-year sort of AA or a four-year program?
No, no, the, well, the Airline Dispatch Course that we're doing, it's actually a 200-hour course, much of it's taught online. It's, it's a semester course.
Okay, so very attainable.
Yeah, and the other, the design build, the drone courses are, are much shorter. Those are, you know, several weeks, three to four weeks. So, but we're, that's a basic course, and then we're going to have add-on courses for customization of platforms, depending on the type of activities that.
Well, and it's very good to hear how attainable those are. When I heard UOG and GCC, I wasn't sure if it was a two-year programs or four-year programs or the like. So that information is very useful to hear. Now with that, you know, I do want to mention that I appreciate the visions of, of my colleagues here in a variety of ways, and, and looking at different ways for Guam to be developing its economic potential. We've talked about diversifying for a very long time, and it is important to be thinking about these issues. And they're ones that are technologically based, so they don't necessarily impact some of the other industries, like the environment, which is so important for tourism, or things like that. This, this industry in many ways is outside of that realm, and it's, it's a different realm. I do want to add on, I'm sure there are many, many uses for having additional drone technology here. So along with the illegal fishing, which is a concern throughout Micronesia for sure, but also as several of my colleagues and I, we went and visited the Coast Guard, and they were talking about the ships that ply the waters of the entire Pacific with just tons and tons of drugs coming from various locations. And so I wanted to add that on as well, because we need all the assistance we can in getting a handle on some of that and, and hearing about those, sorry, I'm going off topic just for a second, but, but hearing about the tons of cocaine and, and other types of drugs going throughout our islands, and, and all of us islands trying to fight it, it's, it's a very, very disheartening and sobering thing to have to face. And we have to pull everything together that we can to, to fight it. The Coast Guard at least did reassure us that they're really building up their defense. So I think, I think with the training that covers most of my questions in understanding that, do you think that there's any, with what Mr. Hernandez was mentioning with apprentice programs, do you think that that would be a strong part of, of a program then that?
On-the-job training, you mean?
Yeah, that will have some, will have maybe some that are ready to go with certification and their education, but others can be apprenticed or further that through apprenticeship?
Absolutely. We already have OJT programs with, with some of our sister companies going. The other thing too is, is our, our hope is that when students come out of these type of programs or whoever graduate from the programs with licenses, they'll also have the ability to build their own companies, depending on what their, their interests are. But yeah, currently, right now, we have an on-the-job training program for graduates of the Airline Dispatch Course, where they'd work several weeks in, for one of the companies. We provide operational control for two Philippine Airlines, and so they would get actual OJT on that. So not only do they get their license and graduate certificates and licenses, they come out with a resume-building experience, you know, they, they can actually say, "We worked in operational control centers." As far as the drones go, our hope is too, first, we've got to attract those companies here so that we can get kids in a position, you know, to, to be interns and get OJT type of, that's the whole, the whole goal.
Sajdou Smasi, Mr. Chair, for letting me ask several questions.
Thank you, Senator Kelly Marsh-Teitzen. Senator Moylan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and to my colleagues here as well, and especially to the panel. Mr. Dali, I understand you're in support of the bill, and to make it stronger, you're, you're requesting that we also include the words of aviation and aerospace. And you can see this broad will really generate much more interest to, on top of the drone business, correct?
That's correct, yeah, particularly in the areas of, of trainings, you know?
Okay. I believe one of the concerns is the Asian market. Is, how important is, is, is that lucrative, or will that be attractive for them to come here? You mentioned Philippine Airlines, doing business with them, and, and I believe that we also have another airline's touch-and-go practice on Guam for quite some time. If we're able to attract the businesses that we're discussing right now, how would that benefit, coming from the Asia side, please?
Well, the most, probably the, the most globally recognized study of aviation demand in the world comes from Boeing. I think the Boeing, you can go online, Boeing, the Boeing 2019 studies forecasting demand for air services through the next decade have. The Asian-Pacific rim, by far and away, I think 30%, 36% of all increased demand comes from this area here. By far and away, the ability to get an FAA certification, no matter where you are on a global level or where you live, is probably the most highly-desired certification. It's, you're able to take those certifications back to home countries and get them co-validated for licenses in, in almost all of those countries, maybe with the exception of China. So there is potential huge demand to attract those people to the island. So global demand for these type of services is by far and away the most robust in this, in this region. We sit obviously on the doorstep of Asia, and the real attractive, the most attractive thing to, to the companies, whether they're in the, the business aviation, the airline, unmanned drone or whatever, is the fact that we're still under FAA jurisdiction, so we can actually reach out and touch those markets while still being in US jurisdiction, Federal Aviation jurisdiction. And that is important, because in order to conduct those activities, they have to be able to conduct oversight activities on a somewhat frequent basis. It's very important.
So all, all within the FAA regulations, nothing foreign, and just, just strictly following FAA regulations, US standards. Okay, thank you. There was also a concern, or there is a possibility that this can be accomplished now, but what, how this would actually help you is, with this wording added to the QC, you, you sound like you're able to market this better. You can go out there and, I guess, promote the product as well by us adding this wording with the adjustments that you mentioned, aviation and aerospace into it with the drones. So right now, you will be, you and other folks on island could be interested in selling this product, being another voice for GITA, to help GITA promote businesses and the economy of Guam, with this specifically saying in the law that, yes, this is all included. So it's a minor change that we can add, but benefit for you. Would, would you, would you consider that important?
Oh, absolutely. I, I think the, obviously, a big selling point's going to be the QC incentive, but, but for those companies that, that still are kind of on the fence, knowing that there's an educated and trained workforce out here is going to be even more critical, I think.
Thank you so much. Thank you to the panel. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Senator Moylan, and thank you to the members of the panel this morning. That will conclude the public hearing on Bill 217-35COR. And next item on the agenda for today is Bill Number 218-35COR, introduced by Senator James C. Moylan, an act to amend Section 58104-F and to add Section 58104.1, both of Chapter 58, Title 12 Guam Code Annotated, relative to creating a qualifying certificate for the entitlement and potential establishment of a processing, trade, and distribution, transformation, or fulfillment center industry on Guam. And we will now hear from Senator Moylan, who is the primary sponsor, for his statement on Bill 218-35COR.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and to my colleagues for, for the public hearing today. Continuing on with the Bill 2118, as similar to 217, the genesis is, the intent is to create, the bottom line is to create legislation to spur our economic activity by attracting new industries and creating jobs on the island. We've entertained, again, GITA, we're looking at their, again, additional information to help us strengthen this bill. But basically, we're looking for investors to come to the island to provide such training as to. island to provide such training as 218, or industries as 218 does with distribution and fulfillment centers. So with these industries being attracted to our island with qualifying certificates, we hope to build our economy. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the opportunity.
Thank you, Senator Moynihan. At this time, I'd like to call up everyone who has signed up to testify. Mr. Ricky Hernandez from GITA, Art Dowley again, and Charlie Hermosa from APL. You can join us at the table if you're here. Okay, thank you. So I'll begin with Mr. Hernandez. Please, again, just state your name again for the record.
Hafeday Senator Clint Rogel and members of the Committee on Economic Development, Agriculture, Maritime Transportation, Power and Utilities, and Emergency Response. Again, my name is Artemio Hernandez, Deputy Administrator of the Guam Economic Development Authority, and I thank you again for the opportunity to provide testimony on Bill 218-35, an act relative to creating a qualifying certificate for the enticement and potential establishment of a processing trade and a distribution transformation or fulfillment center industry on Guam. Bill 218 seeks to add the processing trade company and/or a distribution transportation or fulfillment center under the existing Section 58104F, which includes manufacturing, as eligible activities for the qualifying certificate program administered by GITA. The bill defines a processing trade company as one that shall import all or part of the raw materials from abroad and exports the finished products after processing, transforming, or assembling on Guam, with the requirement that at least 50% of the finished product shall be assembled on Guam to qualify for the tax incentives. The bill also defines a distribution, transformation, or fulfillment center which shall be a warehouse or specialized building which is stocked with products to be redistributed to consumers off-island, and shall be the processing function of the order completion structure, and shall also provide services such as product mixing, cross-docking, and packaging. Section 3 of Bill 218 also requires that the Governor of Guam shall approve a QC applicant after consent that is provided by the GITA Board of Directors, and also explicitly excludes the Guam Legislature from the QC approval process. The GITA is in favor of fiscal policy that aims to create economic activity of value to Guam, which is one of the requirements necessary for the approval of a QC application. Although GITA believes that nothing in the current QC statute precludes any interested company in applying for a QC for activities defined in Bill 218 in either the services or manufacturing categories, the GITA understands that there may be economic benefits associated with the growth of this industry on Guam, and is supportive of the intent of the bill. The GITA suggests the committee's consideration of ensuring the following items are addressed in Bill 218. Under the definition of a processing trade company, there's a requirement that at least 50% of the finished product shall be assembled on Guam to qualify for tax incentives. Because the monitoring and compliance review that GITA does would be necessary to ensure that this requirement is met, it would be quite onerous for GITA's compliance division. We recommend that it either reconsider this requirement or authorize that such funds as necessary shall be paid for by the QC beneficiary. And this is specifically for compliance in the event that there's a QC that's approved for these specific services. Under the definition of a distribution, transformation, or fulfillment center, the bill states that products are to be redistributed to consumers off-island. It appears that this language may prohibit or prevent such businesses from selling locally, which may or may not have been the intent of this language. Lastly, Section 3 of Bill 218 mandates that the Governor of Guam shall approve all QC's after consent is provided by the GITA Board of Directors. This language is contrary to the current process the GITA undertakes as it relates to all new QC applications. The GITA Board of Director first approves a QC application and sends such approval to the Governor of Guam for a final determination. The GITA recommends that this section be amended or deleted in its entirety. Related to Section 3 of the bill, the GITA previously requested the Office of the Attorney General provide guidance as it related to the requirement that all QC applications be approved by the Guam Legislature prior to the submission to the Governor of Guam. The AG's office determined this requirement to be inorganic and unenforceable. The GITA recommends the deletion of such requirement from the pertinent portions of Section 3, Part 1, Chapter 13 of Public Law 35-36, which is the Budget Act of fiscal year 2020, and Section 8, Part 1, Chapter 13 of Public Law 34-116, which is the budget law, that's the original language, the original law that it appeared in, given the legal guidance from the AG's office. So essentially, we received AG opinion related to legislative approval of all QC's, and they determined it to be inorganic and unenforceable, and this is just related to Section 3. But because there is language in current stat, or current, these two current laws that conflict with what the AG has opined, or at least has provided guidance on, we recommend just the deletion of those two separate portions of that section. The GITA is excited at the prospect of new industries on Guam, and with the committee's consideration of the aforementioned items, is available for continuing dialogue toward the goal of diversifying Guam's economy and introducing new investments to Guam. Once again, thank you for the opportunity to provide testimony on Bill 218. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez. Mr. Hermosa? If you could, please introduce yourself, turn on your microphone and introduce yourself for the record before you begin your testimony. Thank you.
Yes, good morning, Chairman. Good morning, Senators. My name is Charlie Hermosa. I'm the general manager for American President Lines, APL. But more importantly, I'm also someone who's very passionate about Guam and the capabilities of Guam. So I'm going to talk through a lot of those capabilities as far as what this bill represents and the strength that it really, truly has. You know, right now, we're at a pivotal point in the way we manage logistics in this globalization that we live in today. And one of the things that I learned very rapidly was during my time working down in Puerto Rico. While living in Puerto Rico, I ran one of the largest distribution centers, three PLs down in Puerto Rico in the Caribbean, and we constantly tried to manage the location with the capabilities of the island and being able to promote what it could actually stand from a logistical standpoint for companies that do business globally. So during that time, during 2006, 2007, unfortunately, Toyota was going through a rough period with the brake systems. That was one indication that we used as a tool for larger corporations to show them the capabilities that they could have by decentralizing and creating a hub-and-spoke-type distribution system worldwide, meaning they could set up distribution centers not only on North America, South America, but in offshore markets such as Puerto Rico, Hawaii, Guam. And in doing so, they would have the means to be able to have the capabilities where if there's an issue with one side of the world, the other side of the world keeps moving forward. As we move today and we see what the coronavirus is doing today on the Asia-Chinese market, there's a lot of scrambling right now that's going on for manufacturing vendors trying to source products, they're trying to divert and source from other regions in the world. And if they don't have those logistical pipelines set in place, there's going to be a lag in being able to produce the goods that the people around the world need. Currently, there's production plans being shut down in Korea because there are no parts being made out of China. There's no assembly being made out in China today, so there's a huge impact on what it has. So when we look at Guam, it really shows a utilization that we can really present our brand. Now, when we talk about brand, we also have to look at the Guam brand that we have, and it's a very powerful one. It's a Guam brand that should be able to compete head-to-head with Hawaii. When we see products in the supermarkets on the mainland US, when we see things made in Hawaii, we should also have products that are made on Guam, on the mainland US and worldwide. Our Guam brand is as strong as any other brand in the world. We talk about the workforce. Well, today, I teach a class at the University of Guam, it's called entrepreneurship. And let me tell you, some of the students that we have on island are very, they're very powerful, they're very talented, it's unbelievable, the ideas and the mechanisms that they think through, right? They're our new generation. Our workforce, similar to Puerto Rico, we had, we struggled with our young talent leaving the island. But in talking to our students, we see that there's, they want to stay here. They want to be able to have something that creates an ability for them to share their ideas and create a workforce environment. And two, I'm a combat veteran. I work with a veterans group. They want jobs. None of us came back the same after we came back from war. Some are not able to find jobs that are the regular nine-to-five, but that mechanism has changed. The mechanism to be able to work nine-to-five has changed. We have single parents. We have a good workforce that we can utilize in a new industry such as what this bill is trying to create. This bill not only attracts investors, but this bill allows for an industry to be created within Guam that allows us to put our name on it. There is no reason why today we have any barriers for anything to come into Guam today and not be and be put together with the people that we have, with the knowledge and the skills that we can produce. With that, thank you, and that's my testimony for today.
Thank you, Mr. Hermosa. Any questions from the members of the, members, my colleagues?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for the opportunity to make comment. This, Ricky, I thank you for your testimony, a copy for it. I see the amendments that you're making, you're requiring us to consider. My concern too here is, and there's a section of the law that I will get with the author as well, is the concern of that the warehouse has to be fully stocked in order to provide someone with a QC. So did you see that section of that? Ricky?
Yeah, I think, just reading the bill, it doesn't say fully stocked, it just says stocked with products to be redistributed to consumers off-island specifically. So there might be some flexibility that might, you might want to consider in terms of it only being for off-island. It might, in terms of QC's, right, it would lower costs of importing, so this, if you were able to possibly sell not only to off-island but also on-island.
Right, that's the one that you mentioned earlier. Also, lastly, if you can provide us with the opinion, the Attorney General's opinion that you received with regards to the section you asked us to delete, do you have the copy of that?
I don't have it with me, but we can email it to the committee.
Yeah, I'd like to read what the Attorney General had to say about that.
Sure.
Okay, thank you so much, and thank you for your testimony.
Thank you, Senator Taitino. Mr. Hernandez, just a quick question, are processing trade and distribution, transformation, and fulfillment companies similar to export trading companies, which are defined in subsection 1 of the section that this bill amends?
Senator, I'd have to get back to you on that.
Okay, thank you. With that, any of my colleagues have any other questions or comments? All right. Senator Kelly Marsch-Taitino?
Sutus Massey, Mr. Chair. And it was so good to hear, as you were saying, Mr. Hermosa, we have, I've felt for many, many years, that for our community members on Guam, we have an extremely talented pool of individuals here and then throughout the world, really. We're constantly hearing about how people from Guam, they're high-level Disney executives, they're out there as game wear developers, the list goes on and on, and often achieving high accolades. So I really appreciate the fact that you noted that as well. I think that's really important. The one question that I was thinking of, again, supporting the idea of us diversifying our economy, supporting the idea of wanting to have more employment for our people and so forth, but just to look at the types of employment that this is going to provide so we can understand it a bit better. So the other bill that we were looking at was looking at those that are going to be entering a specialized field. For this type, at least with my understanding of manufacturing and so forth, are we largely talking about service industry types of employment? Since you've run a distribution center, you can enlighten us as to the other types of employment that could be offered within that, and then how much of it would perhaps be service industry-type jobs?
No, yes, absolutely. So, you know, when you look at the true picture as far as what, when we tell, when we talk about manufacturing, whether it's light manufacturing, you have jobs from as simple as being able to run a forklift, being able to manage the inventory, the picking and the packing. A lot of the pick and pack for the parts that are being put together are still being done manually. So we have bins where we have a specific component, and we have different bins where we have other components. We physically go to those components, pick them, put them in an assembly line, and they get put together manually at that point. We have folks that are deal with IT-related, managing the inventory, the in and out, being able to connect with the external systems where the orders are being placed. We have accounting, we have finance. I mean, it's an entire, entire business that not only takes into account from the forklift driver, the packer, the IT manager, finance accountant, it's a whole world in itself. So there are very specialized skills, but there are also skills that are being trained day in and day out today in our schools.
Very good. It helps us understand the industry as a whole. Overall, our island, we have a lot of service industry, and so it also challenges us in certain ways because a lot of people aren't necessarily making high-level employment, right? They're not making high-level salaries. But it is important for us to hear, I mean, every business is going to be its own set of proportions, but it's important for us to hear that when we hear manufacturing, it's going to provide that type of employment, and for parts of our island, that's important. It's going to be fitting right in with their skill set, it's going to be fitting in with what works for them. But the other part of what you shared is important to hear as well, that there is going to be, hopefully, ample opportunity for these specialized skills that people are going to school for and can further our economy in varying ways and not just at that one singular level. Do you, do you see, because we are so close to Asia, do you see that as any competition for us, or do you feel like, do you assess that we still have a strong ability to compete as we need to and be able to build as we need to?
I'll answer that in two parts. You know, I think there's an organic manufacturing, and if we really want to take a look at that, you know, for example, you know, everybody, well, most people know that, you know, I did start a small business called the Guam Gift Baskets, and the Guam Gift Baskets was really a social entrepreneurship that takes into account all the products that are being made on Guam, and to ship them, either to give them a localized gift, or primarily it's been, it's been going off-island. It's mainly an online business, and what it does is, it's, I meet with different folks with different, that make little trinkets at home, just everywhere, from business, you know, from small cards. Obviously, the chocolates and the cookies are well-known on island, the mugs, everything. So, you know, the idea came about because the Guam brand is very strong back on the mainland, and I had a lot of friends that were asking me for, "Can you send me this?" So slowly, we just started packaging these boxes, and it's really like a travel mechanism to put things that are made on Guam together and ship them off-island. So there alone, we have like a little incubator where we can get folks that are making different trinkets just around the island to come together under one roof to manufacture a beautiful product that will be shipped off-island, or made, or stay here locally and sold as gifts for our tourism. So organically, we have things that we can put together as step one. The second part is being able to complete against Asia, against Asia. And when you look at that market, you have to, we have to be looking at exactly what we're going to be competing against. For example, I met with a pharmaceutical manufacturer last week, and in my mind, I thought that they were making their components or their parts in Asia, and they're making them in LA. LA! And I was like, and then, we talk about labor costs, you know, let's talk about LA, and that's a completely different story. So the mechanism they use is that the type of product that they make is a high-margin product that allows them, for them to char- is, is a high-margin product that allows him, for them to charge what needs to be charged. And we can do the same. Okay, so if we wanna compete against a market that's making pens and, you know, it's, it's gonna be a tough one because it's very saturated. You have multiple companies do it in Asia. But when we get very technical and we really go after and bring in the investors that will utilize the talent that we have here, you'll see that the competition is completely different. So you really have to divide the market into two separate sort of categories, per se.
Sutuus Masi, para, and, and for, for that information, I really like hearing about our potential for what sounds like cottage industries, micro-industries, because I think there's a lot of potential here for that grassroots sort of entrepreneurship. And it, it makes me think of, I've already looked up the Guam Gift Basket online. So it sounds kind of like a, we still send our kids, I have, at least one, I have one child off-island. So we send care packages, of course, right? And so it's kind of like a, a care package from Guam. So there's a lot of potential there. And it helps me think of this industry in a different way. But one of them that's been going through my mind, and perhaps we can talk afterwards, just to understand the potential of it, is throughout Micronesia, we have different economic scales. For FSM, I think their minimum wage is like a dollar an hour. For Palau, it's like 3.25 an hour and so forth. And so it seemed to me that with some of the potential here for our local entrepreneurs, they could be branching out to those areas, be helping the economies there, be providing jobs there, and, and having it work together so that the economy is healthier there, perhaps providing incentive and good things for Micronesia, but also building up our industry here, that we can figure out a role altogether. But, so, thank you for helping me think some of those issues through.
And, and I do apologize, that, that is one point, I'm a horrible, I can't follow my notes on, sometimes, so. But that was one of my points, is actually to look into the Micronesia market because that's another market that, that's, that's thriving, and we should be able to give them the capabilities. And Guam can serve as that hub, being able to provide them with the capabilities to source the products, make them, we can bring them here and then distribute them from Guam out to anywhere in the world. And we should be able to tap in. And that's a very, that's a very untapped market right now. And we should be able to work with them to create a, a connection with them so that we can provide them with the services that they need.
Right, and then it would fit exactly within this manufacturing. And then it's all really local. It's local within the region because it's sources in cottage industries throughout the region. But like you said, the manufacturing center can be here, the, the business can be here. And it can be, we can be a hub. So like I said, I thank you for helping me think some of those things through. Sutuus Masi, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator. Thank you, Mr. Hermosa and Mr. Hernandez for your testimony.
Chairman, just, I'm sorry, just one, one last thing. I also wanted to note that the, the, the bill itself, it has to, we have to have that leverage. So what it stands for, and I don't know if I made that very strong point, to be able to have that passed as it, with the leverage to be able to put forth against the, the investors so that they know that this is in place already, is a huge, huge, huge step. Thank you.
Thank you. The committee will continue to accept written statements on today's hearing within five business days from today, which may be delivered to my office at 238 Archbishop Flores Street, Suite 906 at the DNA Building in Hagatnia. Statements may also be submitted via email to sen.cridgell@teleguam.net. That's sen.cridgell@teleguam.net. Or you may send it via fax at 475-4768. This hearing is now adjourned at 10:36 AM. Thank you.